Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sans and Jim Jones for another episode of Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Dr. Monica Larson, who is running for Henderson City Council Ward Number Two. But before we get to Dr. Larson, Jim, you have anything?
No, actually, as far as rants, I don't really have anything on that level. But with respect to our guest, I think, okay, so Steve introduced me to the judges, and he explained to me how important judicial races are. And I've always been someone like, ah, I'm not so much for judicial races. I'm more concerned about city council. So I'm very excited to have this guest on now. So I can kind of explain why I think city council is actually more important than judges. Although, I will say that Steve has educated me quite a bit. Now, I'm starting to come around to the fact that I think every elected official is actually important. But it should be an interesting interview. And this morning, Steve and I had the privilege of giving a lifetime achievement award to Mayor Carolyn Goodman, and I thought that went pretty well.
That was great.
Yeah, and which is interesting because I actually got a lot of feedback from people. They're like, ah, Carolyn Goodman, she's a Democrat.
Actually, she's independent.
And how would you support her? And I'm like, well, okay, so here's the thing. Whether you're a Democrat, Republican, I really don't care. I just want to know what you're going to do for the community. And Carolyn Goodman has done a lot for the city of Las Vegas. So whether a Democrat or Republican, it doesn't matter to me.
She served quite a few years, giving her time, energy, and sacrifice to the city. So that in itself is a big commitment. I agree.
Dr. Larson.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Did you give us bio?
Yes, same. Where should I start?
At the very beginning, Dr. Larson.
I started out, I grew up in a little town called Wheaton. I was born in Chicago.
Wheaton?
You know where it is?
No.
Okay. Yes, I was born in Chicago, and then we moved out to the suburbs. So in a little town called Wheaton, Illinois, it's very small, almost like a Mayberry. And it truly was, and it was actually a dry city until I got out of high school. So they didn't even have bars. It was more churches and family-type atmosphere. And so that's where I grew up, grade school, middle school, high school is where I went. Then, let's see, I started out as a paralegal for the state's, DuPage County State's Attorney's Office, felony division. And so that was interesting to me, and I prepared briefs and things like that, anything that the attorney needed. And that's kind of where I started getting a little bit of criminal justice bug. Because we had some really wild cases, as you can imagine. I remember one particular case that stood out, well, two, that stood out. And one was a gentleman, well, it was an individual who, let's just say, I saw all the bailiffs and extra police presence, and I said, what's going on? Everything was on lockdown. And they said, oh, there's an individual coming in. We have a case. And he raped an individual. And I said, yeah, that's pretty bad, but there's more than exceptional police presence. And I said, what's so different about this one? And he said, well, he happened to rape a mafia kingpin's daughter. I said, yeah, I'm going home early. I did not want to be in that building. And so that was interesting. But I learned a lot. Got married, had our son, and so I stayed home for a few years to get him settled. Then I worked corporate for a little bit. And then I decided, once our son was settled, to go back to school. So I got my associates in criminal justice. Yeah, then I got my bachelor's in criminal justice with crime scene specialization. And then I was actually going that route. I wanted to be an FBI interrogator. I know.
You wanted to rough him up, huh?
Pow, don't let the heels fool you.
I saw Fatal Attraction. You took that heel right in the eye.
Pow, yes. So that was kind of the route I was going, you know? And then we moved to Norcal over in Antioch.
Antioch?
Yes, you know.
What was that?
It's like suburbs outside of Oakland and San Francisco. So it's in the East Bay. And so it used to be kind of this little quiet little town, farming town. And then people started, the housing prices were low, so a lot of people started moving out into that area. So the police force couldn't handle it. They weren't prepared. And so they started having a lot of crime. I wanted to give back. I was working corporate at that time. And I was going to school for, finishing up my bachelor's and going into my master's program. And I wanted to always give back to the police and law enforcement. So I was volunteering as well. So I had a squad. I had a partner. And we would go out and perform all the duties that the officers needed us to, because they were really.
Like an auxiliary unit.
Yeah, they called it VIPS, like volunteers in police service. My partner happened to be retired Air Force, and great gentleman Rick Floyd was his name. And so we would do anything that the officers couldn't get to. So it would be like abandoned automobiles, which were usually stolen. We'd tag them and have them recovered. Vacation house checks, not all police departments do that. So say if somebody were going on vacation, you just fill out a form. You let us know. We would go check the perimeter, make sure everything was okay and safe. We did handicap parking. We did some missing person things. We would patrol and listen out for things.
Like a neighborhood watch still?
No, I'm a little bit more extensive.
Did you have a gun?
No, it was non-sworn.
You got your CCW?
I just finished my class, yes. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing for the public. Well, can't tell. I had teeth of fifth. So in Chicago, you have eyes in the back of your head, and you use what you have to use. So, yeah, but legally, nothing. But so that's where I started volunteering for four years. And so I really enjoyed it. I loved it. Even working full-time, it was just a joy. And then there's a couple instances we had where I had to go testify in court. One individual, when I was getting off of service, and I was in my civilian clothes, and I left the back gate. It was an individual who, when I passed him, because you always are observant, I witnessed him. He was looking straight ahead, and straight ahead were children. But as I passed him, I said, that's not what I think I saw. But it was. He had a newspaper over his lap, and, but his shorts were at his ankle.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so I looked around. I was on with dispatch. I said, send someone right now. When they got out there, he denied it. So I had to do a civilian arrests and arrest him, have him arrested, and, you know, games like that. The public defender, at that time, they knew I was working full-time, so they just figured, we'll just drag this out. So I think they rescheduled like five times. I took vacation days. I said, no. This is too important to let someone like that out on the streets, because his object of desire was a child. He was a predator, and he had the audacity to do it literally right outside the police department. So with all of that and things going on in the department, there was a young man. He was eighteen, or seventeen, I'm sorry. He was in high school. And he had gotten picked up for breaking into a home. And so they were booking him in, and I, you know, maybe the mom and me.
So I gotta say, public safety is gonna be number one.
Huge.
Top one this city council.
Most definitely, especially given what's going on in Henderson and around the country. It has to be.
But are you done with your bio?
No.
Please.
So at that point, but thank you, at that point, I asked you.
Because Steve doesn't actually ask those questions for it directly.
So I asked the young gentleman, I said, hey, why don't you use, you're obviously intelligent. You're obviously skilled. Why don't you use that for something positive? And he just looked at me with just this deadpan stare, just no remorse, nothing. He goes, just like you go to work, so do I. What's yours is mine, and what's mine is mine.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, just.
Who told you that?
The young man. He was seventeen, and he was already under house arrest. So that just turns something, and then I said, I need to kind of figure out what makes people tick. So I decided to switch and go into, yeah, forensic psychology, who was my masters.
That's how you got your doctorate?
Yeah, I got my masters, and then I got my doctorate in clinical. And my doctorate, I actually treated sex offenders for the state of California. And then I treated victims of crime in traditional clientele.
So you like to get in people's heads, huh?
A little bit. But I like to help people. My job was to help people try and get this whole, this whole could be, to be better functioning.
So you're a doctor in psychology? And you want to get into politics?
I know, right? What's wrong with me? You know, it's funny, because when we relocated here, my plan was to actually retire and kind of just chill and get a lay of the land and enjoy new environment for quality of life. And then we started having all the crime that we had in our neighborhood. And surprising, because they said Henderson is the second safest city. That was the second reason they got me here, besides quality of life. It's a little bit less expensive, obviously, than California. But we started having home invasions, vehicle thefts, peeping toms. It was just out of.
Peeping toms?
Oh, yeah, yes. And so I'm like, not just, not me personally, but throughout the neighborhood. And just, it was out of control. And I said, okay.
What neighborhood you live in?
You would think I would have never thought that. It's a newer community in Inspirada. And so I just.
Oh, they're gonna build a casino out there, huh, Jim? Station?
We're gonna, we're gonna get in that later.
Yeah, and so it just was out of control. So I started going door-to-door. And I said, we gotta know each other and get a sense of community, like it's been lost, you know? And so exchanged numbers, started.
Like a neighborhood watch program? So you created one of them?
Yeah, with Henderson PD.
And you got a little sign going on that says neighborhood watch?
Yes, yes. And so we do our own patrols.
How many homes?
There's about eighty of us in the group. There's a, in our little subsection, there's about two hundred and sixty homes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we patrol, and that's what stopped it. So we, who has more vested interest than the ones who live there? The police can't be everywhere at every time, and so we've got to protect our own.
So does that complete your bio?
Yes, sir.
So tell us, because a few elections ago, all council races was running at-large.
Right.
That must be really easy for you now, just running and just your ward, right?
Well, it's much easier than what Carrie had, Carrie Cox, because I couldn't even imagine going through the whole city.
The first time she ran, she ran at-large, and then I think she ran with the ward. So, yeah, the last time.
Okay.
And I think that's when they passed it, the last time.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the ward, my ward is huge.
Tell us about it.
Well, it covers from St. Rose in Eastern all the way down to Inspirada, Anthem, Seven Hills, Sunrise Ridge to Gibson. So it's a huge, huge ward, but.
And this is a nonpartisan seat?
Yes.
So you've been door-knocking?
Yes.
So you door-knock, you hit every door, right?
Yeah, because I don't subscribe to, because it is nonpartisan, some people say, oh, just hit this one party. I said, no, everyone matters. So the issues are the issues, and it pertains to everyone, so I knock on every door.
And you go across the ward, right? You don't just stay in one little area in neighborhood?
Right.
So what you been hearing about what's going on in that ward, what's happening?
Yeah, the biggest issue is public safety, because of the crime. It's increased dramatically, the officers, and because we've grown exponentially, it's, we're over three hundred and fifty-four thousand in population now.
That's half of the city of Las Vegas.
It's pretty big, and the problem is, they never pace themselves for the infrastructure. And so that includes police, private. Yes, and you need to be responsible, and they didn't. And that includes traffic in the streets. So traffic is congested, getting more congested, but police critically low. They said for, the FBI says for every thousand residents, we should have a little over, almost three and a half officers per thousand, patrol officers per thousand residents. We're point nine in decrease, and we have a lot that are retiring next year. So that's extremely concerning, extremely concerning.
Hence the neighborhood watch program.
That, yes, and not all have it, unfortunately. And so the criminals know it, and also the new police department that's open over by our area is open, but it's not open. So it's not staffed by police. It's staffed, right now, it's recruits in there. And so the nearest station is by Green Valley. So unless you're out patrolling, it's gonna take a little minute, so the criminals know it.
So crime is one.
Yes.
What do you want to do about crime, actually, as a councilperson?
As a councilwoman, first things first, we gotta hire more officers, but we have to pay them what they're worth.
How you gonna bring them in?
Well, federal, and federal monies and grants. But also, you have to recruit at good places. So like the military bases are, would be one, like the Air Force and stuff like that. Nellis would be a good one.
Not Dunkin' Donuts?
Good grief, no. No, but hire.
Popeye's writing?
No, no, although you never know. No, I'm kidding, but hire good recruits, pay them what they're worth. Because right now, did you know they're the lowest paid in the valley? They used to be the highest, yes.
Well, how did that happen?
Yeah, you tell me.
I thought the city would start having the lowest paid since. They getting all these lawsuits?
You would think. They just didn't make it a priority. They used to attract all over the world years ago, and then they became the lowest. So they were actually paying kennel attendant workers more per hour than patrol officers. They were getting paid twenty-five dollars an hour.
So who's getting that?
The patrol officers were.
That's it?
Yes, so no one was running in lines to say, I'm gonna jump in front of a bullet, or, you know.
Not for twenty-five an hour?
No.
Maybe twenty-five fifty?
I doubt even that. And so that's why they were having an issue with, but it's never been made a priority recently.
So as a councilperson, what could you do about that?
Pay them what they're worth and give them incentives.
Where you gonna get the money from?
Grants, and also, because there's grants out there and federal funding. And so right now, also, the city can prioritize the funding on the important things, which is public safety and the infrastructure. Because you don't have a quality of life if you don't have police presence, fire, and your infrastructure. So for instance, why spend seventy million dollars on a sports complex? That seventy million dollars could have paid for the police and the fire, and then some. Use the funds appropriately.
Right, so a first responder is part of this whole thing, including ambulance service and fire?
Yes, because right now, over the last year, the fire chief, he's a wonderful man, and he works really hard, and he cares about his staff. But he's trying to recruit also, because they're low. They just had another class, graduated class, and they're still hiring actively. But they were low as well. And also, he was asking in the city council meetings over and over again for funding, because his trucks, the trucks were breaking down. The fire station, some of them had mold and rats in them.
Ew.
I know, and they have to live in that. So why should they even have to ask? You know what I mean? That's part of, you take care of your first responders and your public, your police officers. And they didn't. He had to keep asking and keep asking and keep asking. And when he did, he gave, the last time, he gave like a forty-five-minute presentation. It was so sad, because I thought he was gonna cry. He was almost grovelling. He needed twenty-five million dollars to do what he needed to do. Now, mind you, across the nation, there's a certain amount of time that you have to, firemen have to respond to an emergency to save someone's life, whether that be heart attacks, stroke, gunshot, whatever, to save someone's life. I think it's like eight minutes or nine minutes. And they were nearing that threshold because of the traffic, because of the trucks. And he was asking for something he needed. It wasn't something that was just wishful thinking. He actually needed. And he said, I'm sure we're gonna get the money.
Okay, you know, I was at the Henderson City Council last night. You were there too, weren't you there, Jim? Was that, wasn't that you? And, and I want to know if, who's paving the streets? And who's doing all the street construction? Is there, is there just one company doing it?
There's one company.
So, and what I heard was Las Vegas Paving.
Yes.
And I heard the mayor had to recuse herself, because her son and her husband works for Las Vegas Paving. But she's the mayor.
Right.
And I mean, if I'm the mayor, right, and I said, hey, I gotta recuse myself from this, and I got all, you know, I'm here with a body of four people on the council, not including myself, right? And we're gonna vote on these contracts, right? And remember, my husband and my son, they work for Las Vegas Paving. You know what I'm talking about? How you think the council's gonna vote for those contracts, right?
Right.
Is there any other paving company that they could choose from? Do they put this out for bids? Or it's just automatic, we're just gonna take that one, so we could, you know, maybe my husband's gonna get a pay raise, because I'm the mayor. Maybe my son is gonna get a little more time off of work, you know, what have you. What's going on with this Las Vegas Paving and the Henderson City Council? Are they in cahoots with each other, or what's happening? What could you do about that if you were a city councilperson?
That's why I can't wait till I'm on that city council. Because, as you mentioned, they need a quorum of three. They won't get it with me. I don't agree with what's happened. They've been the only ones who have.
And what's happening? Let's hear.
Well, they're the only ones who haven't received the contracts.
Why is that? Did they put it out for bid? Did they?
They claim, they claim they do.
Do you see this public announcement?
In fact, I actually requested at the May seventh meeting, because they had two more bids in one of the residence areas that really nothing's wrong with those streets. I think one was seven point six million.
Nothing's wrong with the streets.
Nothing, it was nothing major. It's a relatively new area. Nothing was really wrong with those streets. But seven point six million.
Oh, wow.
And then the second one. And I just actually drove by it yesterday. It doesn't look like anything has happened with it, and the school season is about to start. So the residents are really upset about that.
So I'm really glad that Steve brought this up, because I want to, I want to actually piggyback on that more, just as a point of procedure. Because that is something that city councils always bring up, right? So, okay, well, it's all fine and good on the public record, when the mayor of Henderson says, oh, well, I can't vote on this, because my husband and son works for it. But what I would like to see personally is that if they have to abstain from voting, then, then in the beginning of the city council meeting, then they shouldn't even have a quorum. So if the mayor says, I have to abstain, and then whoever is in charge of city council ward three in Henderson has to abstain, and whoever's in charge of ward two in Henderson City Council, they have to abstain. So therefore, then they don't have a quorum. So it shouldn't even come to even be passed.
Exactly.
Because Henderson City Council operates the same way as Las Vegas City Council does. It's a city manager, form of government. So the city council sets policy, but the actual city manager is the one that carries them out. So if elected, would you be willing to do something like that? Like, hey, we don't have a quorum here. Because it, it's all fine and dandy that they're sitting there, but if they can't vote, then they shouldn't even be counted in attendance, in my opinion.
It's, the issue has always come to whether you abstain or not, it's total conflict of interest. And so constituents have been really upset about that. They presented that. And I've shared my concerns as well, and all they'll say is, I'm sorry, I can't speak on that. So I said, well, maybe you can speak on this. How many contracts has your husband and son's company that they work for with Las Vegas Paving been awarded since you've been mayor for the last two years and since you've been a councilwoman? She said, I can't, I can't answer that. So I turned to her director, Lance Olson, and I said, maybe you can. And he said, well, I'm sure we can find that information. I said, oh, you most definitely can, and you're gonna have to. We're taxpayers.
So, yeah, I mean, that's one of the things, it's like, I mean, in full disclosure, I mean, I'm not, I'm not upset at the mayor of Henderson. Like, yeah, her husband works for Las Vegas Paving, fine, and her, and her son does too, and that's okay. But just disclose it, and let's move on.
Well, it's a difference between disclosing it and all contracts go to that company. So I asked for also, the three competitive bids are legally required to obtain. I still have not received that information.
Well, okay, so let's, let's fast forward. And now you're elected. When you're elected, will you do that?
Absolutely not, because you don't want to give the appearance of being improper or unethical or moral. I just wouldn't put myself out there like that. You don't compromise yourself or give that appearance. Because even if you abstain, you have your individuals who you've worked with and have a relationship that can be swayed. And it just gives, it doesn't give a good feeling to constituents or anyone else. For instance, there was another issue yesterday that came up. A press release went out, and it was for a particular fiesta casino, the previous lot where they had torn it down. And it's been an existing parking lot since, for the last, yes, almost two years. I asked about what their plans were for that parking lot over a month ago. And I was told, oh, we're working on that, because it was slated for a sports complex, allegedly. Now, backtrack, when they purchased it, it was not, from what I understand, even presented at the city council. They purchased it without even talking to constituents. How do you purchase a thirty-two-million-dollar piece of property without having a discussion with constituents? It wasn't on the agenda, from what I understand. So when constituents found out, they said, oh, come on, come on to the parking lot and tell us what we should do with this piece of property. Don't you think you should have had a plan in place before you spent thirty-two million dollars? I would hope so. And two years later, nothing else has been done with it. So I asked this a month ago, after they spent the sixty million with the ten million dollars of the investor or operator for the sports complex. I said, well, I guess you should be congratulating yourselves for a new sports complex. But what happened to that thirty-two-million-dollar sports complex that you were scheduled to build on the parking lot? We're working on it. We're working on it.
Yeah, the wall, I'm glad you brought that up too. One of the other issues that I have with and and. Steve knows this, I'm very huge on city council. That's I have said it a million times, that's where the rubber meets the road. So uh, city council meetings and when they're held. I mean, explain to me why uh, Henderson City Council meeting. Is on Tuesday at three thirty in the afternoon.
Strategic.
I mean, I I I understand it's a twenty four hour town, but come on now.
It's the first and third Tuesday of every month. At three thirty, where most people are working. And it's very difficult for many to get there, so you don't see many people in the audience at all. To even understand what's on the agenda, to know what's on the agenda and to object to the agenda. It, the, if you, I mean, you were there yesterday, primarily who was there? Our city staffers to fill the room. And so, yeah, there's a problem and an issue. Cuz I was talking to someone today, a constituent, and she said years ago, they used to be held in the, in the evening. To be more accommodating for working adults. So, but, and as you notice, it was done in record time.
Steve and I were talking about. And I've been to a lot of them, in different municipalities, and that is the fastest one.
And and that's concerning because there's no one there to object, challenge or say anything and. Everything is grouped in, rubber stamp proved.
Do they think it's their money?
You tell me.
That's what it sounds like to me. So, uh, how how could, how could, I'm gonna use the word corruption. How how could, how could we remove this corruption?
People have to use their weapon, which is.
One city council member at a time?
Vote, 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 your vote. People think that their votes don't matter. They do. Every vote matters, and you have to use your vote, that's your weapon. Vote these people out that you don't agree with or support. And individuals who are not present. Um, the majority of the time and who just don't care. Vote, that's your weapon. Get involved, show up to these meetings, start being vocal. Show up to the meeting, speak in the general comments section or on the agenda. But you have the ability to do that and don't feel intimidated. That's your right. These are public officials, elected officials, public servants. They work for us. And when I am on that council, I work for you. That's the way it's supposed to be, and I think they've lost many. Many elected officials have lost sight of that, and it's wrong.
So what, what motivated you to get involved in the city council?
Um, exactly that. I told you about the crime we were having. We had a lot of speeders going through like sixty, seventy miles an hour. I reached out to the current councilman, the incumbent, Dan Shaw. Continued calling, calling, calling. No response.
Yeah, see, what he did to me.
Yeah, surprise, surprise, that's his M O, and that's what he does. He, uh, like, and it was extremely insulting. It's like, wait a minute. You work for us and you could have the decency to return a call. He doesn't. And so I started showing up to the city council meetings and he still sat there and did nothing. Said nothing, did nothing. I had to get assistance from another council person. Who, it's not even their ward, because he just did not do nothing, anything, and I said, okay, I'm running.
So why does people keep electing these do nothing politicians?
Cuz they don't do their homework or name recognition or, well. When he first, I'll just put this out there, he was never elected into office the first time. He was appointed by the previous mayor. He just.
Everybody wants a proxy.
Yeah, and once he was there, that's all he needed.
That was it, huh? Miss, um, Dr. Larson. Is is there anything that we haven't addressed that you'd like to put on the record?
Well, the biggest thing is, we have a governance policy on how we're to conduct ourselves. And what most people know, cuz they do a very, very, they do their best to minimize as much as they can. With a government policy, uh, a governance policy, I think an elected official should live in the ward. Uh, and in the state uh, that they are to serve, full time, not part time, full time.
Isn't that, isn't that a law?
Yes, you're supposed to live in the ward for fifty one percent of the time.
So are you saying that your opponent is not living in the ward?
My opponent.
Or the city of Henderson for that matter?
He flies in several days a month on his chartered jet. To attend the city council meetings. It's rare that you see.
He has a chartered jet? Ah, so how does he know how the regular folks live? And how how does he represent, how how many, how, okay, so i- i- if you're a public. Official, especially a city council, representing constituents. You should be relatable to majority of your constituents. So how does he know how his constituents live if he, a chartered jet? How many people have one of those?
Pays not.
Sure you do. That's a joke, everybody, that's a joke. I mean, I'll take a hell out there. Get around, travel. I'll take a Sashna, whatever, but yeah.
Well, that's the problem. You have to be relatable, and that's why you receive the response that you did and I did. Entitlement.
So he has a chartered jet, so he goes back and forth. Why would he wanna come out here and be a Henderson City Council person? That makes, how much they make?
Um, about sixty thousand a year. I thought the job was free and I would have done it for free.
So they make about sixty grand a year. And and when I looked him up, he 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 has a, he has a five million dollar house. Here in Henderson, and the 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 house in Utah is about three million and change. If you have that much money, why would you wanna be a, a sixty thousand dollar a year Henderson council person? Unless you're getting some type of backroom deal, under the cuff. Let me drop this envelope right there at your feet. Oops, I dropped something. Oh, no, it's yours, it's not mine. And and you, and I mean, that's the only thing I could think of why these people would. If they make that much, have that much money in equity or whatever. Why would they want a sixty thousand dollar job unless they're, they're doing some type of. Deal in the back that's, that the, that the public have no idea what they're doing, you know, especially. You know, when they run for reelection on these C and E reports, campaign expense reports. How all this money starts funneling in. It's disgusting though. Blatant right in front of your face. And and the public seems to just reelect these people.
I think like a lot of, just don't know how to look and all they have to do is go to the Secretary of State's site. And look on the C and E reports, we all have to file them. So that includes like what donations we receive and what expenses we um, spend. And so what's interesting, it is a sixty million dollar question, by the way. So why would developers put four and five hundred thousand dollars? Into an individual's campaign fund for a primary election for a position that's part time and pays sixty thousand a year?
That's because they wanna make the multimillion dollar contract deals. And the public is just not seeing that at all. So let me uh, let me ask the same question to you, Dr. Larson. Why do you want this job?
To make a difference and to stop what I.
Okay, so when you do get elected. Now, you do realize that, now I'm not putting words in Steve's mouth, but I'm putting them in mine. Like, if I find out when you get elected, you're doing the same thing that your opponent did. Are you going to be willing to answer my phone call and come back on? And respond to like, hey, okay, well, yeah, I did have a five million dollar house in Herbert City, Utah, but.
Never see that. I actually have a moral compass, so that's the difference, and so it's, it's not okay. And I don't care what anyone says, it's not okay. And that's, that's who I am, and that's why I've always hated corruption and injustice. That's why I've worked with law enforcement my entire career. Uh, oh, over thirty five years with law enforcement, and I still do. I just can't stand it and any appearance thereof. And so I wanted to run to actually make a difference. One, you have to listen to your constituents. Two, you need to live here and care about here, and you, you have to follow through on their needs. Another issue. Um, individuals in a retirement community, um, were begging for a, a stoplight. Begging, and they were having accidents, extremely dangerous. These are sixty and seventy year olds trying to turn left. With individuals coming seventy and eighty miles an hour at them. So, and there was just one last night. Right after city council meeting, but I attended a meeting with Michelle. I don't call her mayor, but Michelle and Dan Shaw, the incumbent. And their safety, and they brought their whole entourage in the news there. And I s- uh, one, some of the constituents brought that up and I addressed it as well. And they said, Michelle and Dan, it wasn't warranted. What do you mean it's not warranted? It's a public safety issue. Your constituents are telling you this is a danger. There's numerous accidents. She said, it's not warranted. I said, okay, what are you waiting for? A fatality? She wouldn't answer, Dan wouldn't answer, and her safety person she deferred to said, ten accidents or a fatality.
Wow, what happened to preventive maintenance?
You think? Right.
Like I'm gonna clean my weapon. Before it gets jammed.
It's it's insane, and last night, and I brought it up again in the council meeting cuz another constituent brought it up and I addressed it. They tried to turn my mic off to keep me quiet, which is not gonna work because um, they try and sugarcoat it and say. Oh, go talk to our safety engineer in the back. Wait a minute. Let me refresh your memory from last week where you said, you need to sit down, it's not your turn. And they turned my mic off and I said it anyway. No, you said it was not warranted and it was gonna be ten accidents or a fatality. We're not gonna sugarcoat anything, and I, I, I am so like. I hold people accountable. Don't listen to your constituents. And then lo and behold, God forbid, there's an e- an accident, a bad one last night, that involved a little two year old boy. And I still, I went over there today. It's like, when is enough enough? So what do stoplights, uh, 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 stoplights cost? About seventy five grand to a hundred and twenty five grand? Let's see, they spent thirty two million dollars on a parking lot that is still nothing developed on for two years. They spent seven, they're spending seventy million dollars for a sports complex, but you can't spend seventy five thousand to save a life. Multiple lives. What's wrong with that picture?
Is this the same council that gave um, uh, was it Allegiant? Um, the um, the um, facility, the workout facility? And, or the land, and then uh, uh, they took the land, they gave, they donated the, the land to them and then. Allegiant, was it the Raiders? Raiders got, took the land and turned around and 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 made a profit off the land that was donated to them by the city of Henderson?
Well, unless I'm wrong, from what I heard, um, it was a friend, a developer friend. The Raiders wanted that land and the developer friend. Was, it was sold to that developer friend for pennies on the dollar, and he in turn sold it to the Raiders. For a very substantial.
But it was a gift from the council?
It's always, they have lots of friends, let's put it that way.
But but they, they shouldn't be doing that. It's the people's money. It's the people's property. It's not theirs to, to do as they wanna do.
That's what fueled me to run, because I have to be a voice for the people.
Okay, so speaking of a voice for the people, your opponent, your opponent um, has six federal lawsuits. Why is he still sitting up there as a public servant with six federal lawsuits across the country, Illinois, um, where, where the other states? Six of them. And and that's because he was charging people seven hundred percent interest.
Some in cases, over eight hundred percent.
Jesus, that, that, that's a crook.
It's so like mind boggling and disgusting.
And he's a councilman? I don't understand where the mindset of voters.
And again, hence, where's the governance policy?
He should be in jail.
It's so disgusting.
Sitting up there in the council making decisions for the, for the people of Henderson.
So again, my thing is, if you can't be truthful about where you live. If you can't be truthful about the status of six federal lawsuits. With pred- involving predatory lending at over eight hundred percent interest. If you can't be truthful about your side hustle consulting companies. That's doing business in the city that you have a say in. Where do you think his allegiance, in my opinion, lies?
And he also has, I believe, um, if my memory serves me correctly, a little over two million, two million dollars in federal taxes that he owes.
I heard something about that.
This is the guy you run against? You should be able to stay home and watch Oprah and have bonbons and win this thing. Because this guy's a crook.
It's, it's absolutely just.
Shouldn't even be on the ballot.
That's how I felt, but again, why, why would the city overlook all of these things? Again, remember the three votes.
Because somebody's making money hand over fist. Uh, then I agree with what you said, Steve. But I think a lot of it has to do with just people are discouraged from actually getting involved. And I mean, that's the way I look at it. Like, there are so many people out there that like actually really want to change things. But they don't spend enough time digging every, I mean, not everybody and and I'm not bragging to myself for Steve. But not everybody is Steve Sanson or Jim Jones, like, all right, wait, oh, this doesn't make sense. Let me look this up. Not everybody is that way.
Not everyone is, but I think they're getting more informed and enlightened, especially with the upcoming presidential election. So most, many people are getting more informed, and so they're doing their research, they're doing their due diligence. They're having conversations with their neighbors, relatives and friends, so the message is actually getting out there. Which I'm grateful. Um, you would think, why isn't the news, all news stations? Exactly.
Unless they're scared, I think is a fair factor there. You know, when, when I went to the council, you, 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 you're a doctor in psychology, not, not a medical doctor. But I I'm, I'm looking at this councilman's face, um, your opponent, Dan Shaw. And uh, he looks like he just can't stop drinking. I mean, his face is beet red. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not by far a professional on drug and alcohol abuse. But i- i- it looks to me that, that this guy just keeps hitting the bottle, like. He cannot s- put down that bottle. His face was red, his nose was huge. Um, his eyes were sagging, and 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 when I was talking to him, he gave me this stare like. I don't know, like, he's delusional. I I ju- I ju- I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn or what, but but this was my observation, okay? Does this guy have a drinking problem?
I haven't assessed him, however, you have to rule out all kinds of things. There could be many factors.
And you're gonna be on the council looking like that? I mean, I mean, if if he think that people can't see. That, then he's more delusional than the damn alcohol he's drinking.
Well, there's been numerous comments from individuals saying he does not look well.
Of course not. How, how could you put this out there to educate the people? I mean, how many people in your ward, three, what?
There, um, there is actually, I'll give you the right.
Because when I looked at him, I was like, this guy has a major, major drinking problem.
Well, I don't know that, but he does not look well.
I mean, if you're charging people seven hundred percent interest, eight hundred percent interest on loans. And you live in a five million dollar house, you're ripping off people big time, and you don't care. And you don't care if you have no moral comp- compass is what you said earlier? If you have no huh?
Compass.
Compass, if you have no moral compass, which you would need to be a public servant. How how does that even mesh?
It doesn't. It's very, very concerning. That's why I was compelled to run.
None of that makes sense to me, Dr. Larson.
It doesn't make sense. And the only sense that it makes is. Other individuals who need to also benefit from him being on that council.
You you know, a public servant is supposed to be humble. A public servant is supposed to put others before themselves.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, that that's the whole concept of, I I mean, I was in the military for twelve years. And 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 that's the concept. And especially when you take an oath to this country to protect, serve and defend, right? And and you're gonna take this oath and you're gonna go and 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 be in a job that's supposed to be a public servant. And you're gonna rip people off like that and you're gonna be disingenuous and you and you're gonna show up to work. Um um I'm not saying the guy was drunk, but he he looked like he he shouldn't be there. It looked like he needed a nap or two. And and you're gonna show up to work like that in 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 a in a public setting, um being on TV. Because that's live stream, right? Being on TV and he, that means you have no respect for the position you hold. And you have no respect for the people you serve. The is that an accurate statement of your opponent?
I would concur. I think that a public official should be representative of the of the constituents that they serve. By being humble, by listening, by living there, by actively following through on their needs. Not my own personal self-interests.
Right. And 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 the other thing I found out is that he doesn't even show up to functions. He's not active in the community. He doesn't show to events. He has this proxy show for him or make excuses for his non-appearance. Um uh come on.
I know. I was at this.
Why is this guy still sitting there?
That is the the million dollar question. I'm not, that's how I feel.
He doesn't have no name recognition.
Well, well, his name is not positive when you ask people because many of them know.
Voter turnout slow.
Yeah. And this time I think the voter turnout will be high. And so, for instance, I went to this one um meeting he never shows up to. They always have a name plate for him and they come back and they say, oh, he's not gonna make it. Well, I knew on this one particular one, after the primary election, that he would be there. Because um he has to start showing his face. So he might be in town for another day or two um to make sure. And so at this particular meeting, he showed up late. He had a seat right next to me, which didn't intimidate me. He had did a quick photo op with his handler, Elizabeth Trossler. Who handles the mayor, Michelle, and the others. He took a quick photo op. He was out in ten minutes. I turned around, he was gone. I actually took a picture of it. And I said, where where's Dan? Because that's the saying across town. Where's Dan?
So I I wanna ask you this question. Um and. This is something that like a lot of people didn't uh get to see. Well, they will eventually when it gets out on uh on social media, but. One of the things, and it wasn't put on by me, but uh. When uh when we were at the Henderson City Council meeting the other night. And you got up and the second time, but the first time you were actually. Asked to get up, but the second time, and you're like, well, I I don't care.
Well, wasn't that I don't care?
That that's okay. At the same time, please let me finish, Dr. Larson, with all due respect, but. Yeah, if you're going to be someone who is elected. Uh to uh city council, like you don't. You you don't respect the rules. So then, once you're up there. Then how will you handle that when somebody else doesn't?
Well.
Respect the rules.
If you look back, and I do respect the rules. If you look back in the previous recordings, because they're always recorded, there's other individuals. They have given the liberty. If the subject at hand is something that someone wants to add to, they will allow them to speak. She did not allow me to speak yesterday.
True.
Because she knew what I was going to say.
Yeah. No, and that's true. That's fair enough. I just wanted to get that out there. I wasn't attacking you. I just. I just wanted to get that out there because, you know, you know that's gonna be brought up.
Oh, I don't care if it is. Again, it's about listening to the constituents. If you have something to say, the meeting was what, fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
You can't allow me to talk for thirty seconds to bring up something that was just discussed, something important regarding safety. So you can't give me thirty seconds to add on, which they have in the past. But it was intentional not to allow it because I was bringing up their fact of rejecting it. So thirty seconds I didn't think was out of order when they've allowed others in the past. And I did, I said, may I speak? And she, I went to the council to say, may I speak on this? And she cut me off and they turned my mic off.
Yeah, she said, uh she said something, uh she said, wait your turn.
She said, wait your turn. Okay, there was one other person behind me that was talking about a different subject.
Right.
So why would you have someone come back to talk about the same subject that was at hand? And it's not, it's no, Michelle has a contentious relationship when challenged on. Speaking the truth or repeating what she said.
That was good.
Thank you.
Jim, you have anything else with Dr. Larson?
No, I I mean, other than I just think that it's. It just, i- it's so interesting, the uh dynamics with uh city council. I don't think that people really truly understand how important city council is. And so, the only uh other question that I wanted to ask you. And I already know, the i- i- it's kind of rhetorical question because I already know how you're gonna answer this question. And hopefully you hold true to this. But one of my favorite uh city council people is Brian Knudsen. Who is uh he who is my city councilman in Las Vegas Ward One. Very responsive. So if I call him up and there's a problem, he responds immediately. So w- would you be willing to do the same thing and be that responsive? To your constituents in Henderson Ward Two?
Most definitely.
And then, right before uh Steve closes us out, can you give a. A a geographical background of where exactly Henderson City Council Ward Two is?
Yeah, I as I shared, it's off of um, the ward would be from Eastern and Saint Rose. Down to Raiders Way, a little past Raiders Way in the industrial area, which includes Inspirada, Anthem, Seven Hills. Sunridge Heights, Horizon Ridge and Gibson. Now regarding being attentive um to the constituents, I most definitely will because one thing I'll do that my. Uh the incumbent has never done is every week, set aside time, hours. For constituents to come in if they have questions or issues that they want to address, to actually be heard and validated. And responded to. I'm not gonna send a staff member to do it for me. That's why you're elected. Listen to your constituents and make that time.
Dr. Larson, thank you so much for coming on the program.
Thank you.
If you could look into the camera and tell folks why they should go and put you. In City Council Ward Number Two. Matter of fact, and I'm gonna bring this up.
Yes.
Because I just started something.
Okay.
Because I was joking about it when I was leaving the council, but it 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 it's it's an issue. Or it can be an issue. I'm the type of person. I don't look at party affiliation.
Right.
I look at the person. I don't look at color.
Right.
I look at the person.
Right.
I don't look at how much they got in their pocket. I look at the person.
Right.
But there is no person of color on that city council.
Right.
Are there any persons of color living? In Henderson or is Henderson just not colorful? I mean, I'm trying to put it in a decent way without sounding radical. Um is 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 there, I mean, I mean, wh- wh- what are the demographics? There for car, do you, I don't even know if you know, as a whole.
Yeah.
With for Caucasian, Hispanics. Um blacks and Asian. If you wanna throw some Indian in there, I don't know. But what are the demo- or would they put Indian with Asian? I don't know. What is, what is the demographics in there and and shouldn't the council reflect? What the demographics are for the entire city of Henderson?
Yes, well, first and foremost, I would be the first person of color ever on the city council.
Ever. How long has Henderson ca- how how long has Henderson been in existence?
It's it's been at least, um I I don't know exactly, but about a hundred years.
My god, they can't find anybody of color that's that's educated, that 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 is a a a a um. Uh humble, that that's willing to serve the people in over a hundred years?
Isn't that insane? An eleventh female, by the way.
An eleventh female out of how many men?
I don't know the total count of men.
And and again, and again, I I am, I am just.
But it's surprising.
Feel, I just feel that they could find somebody intelligent that's willing to serve their constituents.
Right.
Other than another person that's not of brown, yellow or black, right?
Right.
Uh uh because if 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 you're gonna serve constituents, you have to have. That same service sitting on the council.
Right.
To serve the constituents.
Right.
And 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 I'm just amazed that that there is, they can't find anybody of color. That could be a council person in the entire city of Henderson.
Surprising. And the demographics, the last time I looked on this site because their their information isn't always up to date. And that's to say the least, but the last time I had seen what they had published, I think it was sixteen percent Hispanic. Nine percent Asian, si- um six percent African American. And the rest um Caucasian.
But how many of them, and I'm glad she brought this up. So how many of them actually uh ran for city council? I mean, that's the thing for me, I'm I I'm not so much concerned about race. I'm more concerned about competency. Can you actually do the job? And so for me, just don't mean to cut you off there, uh Dr. Larson, I'll let you finish. But let me get out of my soapbox here for a minute. One of my main things is like. It's um and I'm going to, and I do apologize to everybody, I'm gonna make this really partisan on this one. I I I find it interesting that the Democrat Party, even though. Veterans in politics were a nonpartisan group. And I've worked really hard on maintaining that. But I always find it interesting that uh diversity and inclusion, it's like, okay. But what's the competency of these people? So for intra- uh so to just. Um to explain myself a little bit more, it's like. Everybody was mad at me when I said I would not vote for Hillary Clinton to be president. They're like, oh, you just hate her because she's a woman. I'm like, no, I have no problem with having a woman president. I just don't like. Her, okay? And Kamala, oh, well, you don't like Kamala Harris because she's a minority. I'm like, no. She's not competent to do that job. It's not that. And then, but the in the same respect. Um you know, there's a lot of white men, but your opponent is one of them. I'm like, yeah, no, he's not competent in this job. So I think we have to get to the point of. Where it's like, can they do the job though?
And that's always been the case. It's competency. Um my background is very diverse.
Right.
I've worked with the homeless, I've worked with substance abuse, I've worked in corporate, I've worked. With treating individuals, I've worked with the police, I've worked with veterans. It's encompassing. So that's important to me for people. I wouldn't have gone into the work that I, the work that I have throughout the years if I didn't care about people.
Yeah.
I wouldn't put myself out here and be vulnerable, make myself and my family vulnerable to attacks and all kinds of other. Things and personally fund myself.
Key, you have to have the love of people.
Right.
Yeah.
If I didn't, right, I wouldn't have done it. I would have sat home and watched TV and eaten bonbons. I would have volunteered my time somewhere.
But how, but how, how could you concentrate on? A- as a, as a, as a city council member, who's supposed to be a public servant. How could you concentrate on helping other people and helping them with their issues? If you have your own issues you're dealing with, I mean, six federal lawsuits. For charging people's eight hundred percent interest, which is a violation of state and federal law. That's one. Over two million dollars owed to the IRS. I mean, that alone will drive me absolutely crazy. Living a five million dollar house here, a three million dollar house in Utah, taking a charter plane back and forth, don't even. Live in the city you're representing. How could you concentrate on anybody's problems? You got your own problems you're dealing with here. Plus, you got all this travel time back and forth to Utah. I mean, you you, no wonder he sends people to all these different events because he's not around to do it. Either he's not mentally around to do it because he's concentrating on all his shit, right? And plus, he's traveling back and forth from state to state. How 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 are you gonna best serve your constituents? It's a twenty four hour day and it's a part time job. So if you work eight hours, that's full time, that's four hours, it's part time. How are you gonna do that when you, when you doing all of this to try to keep your own head above water?
Exactly.
It just doesn't make sense to me. Do does people, Henderson, do you actually see that? I mean, do they, does people see that?
A lot of people are, like I say, getting more informed and doing their due diligence. All they have to do is Google him. Google Dan Shaw and you'll find the information you need.
Well, I hope you win.
Thank you. I plan to win.
I hope you win.
Thank.
And I hope they don't screw up these electoral election boxes and these machines and 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 plates so he wins. I I just hope you win. Because wh- what what we need are are people that are willing to help others. You know, that that's what a public, I mean, it's called public servant for a reason.
Right.
I mean, I mean, you you have to win because you can't allow this misfit to represent, this is a four year gig?
Yes.
To sit on the council for another four years and doing what he's doing now. I'd like to know how many people he's actually helped since he's been there. You know?
Question.
I'd like to know if there's any kind of personal testimonies of people he's actually helped. Without helping himself in in return, you know?
Yeah, uh because I would exclude developers from that list, but uh.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And and this monopoly with Las Vegas pavement has to stop. They need to put that out for a bid and all these other mom and shop. You know, um 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 paving company need to have their say.
Right.
I mean, if they don't have the equipment, they don't have the manpower, they can't get the job done, that's one thing. But at least put it out there so they can have an equal and fair opportunity.
Right.
To do that, to make that bid, to to put their thing in, or to or or to or to fix their own company so they can, they can be competitive.
Right.
You know, but if you don't put it out there, how are they gonna be competitive? How are they even gonna know?
Exactly.
What they need to be competitive.
Right. It's gotta be fair. It's gotta be fair.
And 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 there gotta be some type of rules when when. And 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 there gotta be some type of rules when 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 a mayor of a city have both her husband and her son a- a- working for a paving company that contracts come before the city and the millions of taxpayers' dollars? And 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 you're gonna say, well, I am going to recuse myself over here to this councilman, over here to that councilman, and they're gonna vote on it anyway. Right. You know, it just
Yeah, it's like, it it, I'm glad you brought that up just real quick. It's like, well, uh, hey, Steve, I gotta recuse myself on this vote, but make sure you vote for it. Oh, okay. Oh, we're good then. Yeah, I gotta recuse myself.
That's too close at home. Your husband and your son?
Yes.
Maybe your uncle, maybe your cousin Louis from down the street. You know, your Aunt Cookie from across the country. But but your husband, the guy you sleep with every night, the guy that you tell all your little secrets to, and your son who you carried for nine months, and and and, oh, come on, that is just way too close, Henderson.
Pretty incredible, pretty incredible. And yesterday there was something also where, um, they had a press release for the, um, casino that had been sitting empty for two years that I brought up a month ago. Lo and behold, there's a press release yesterday morning. And the person get, the company giving the consideration is tied to council member Dan Stewart, who works for this individual.
Imagine that.
Yeah, imagine how that happened. And then they said, oh, no, no, that's not, we're not gonna do anything about that. He voted on it.
He should have recused himself.
Right.
Nobody filed ethics complaint?
We'll see what's coming. And
So you're talking about, uh, where, uh, Henderson?
Yeah.
Fiesta Henderson?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then by the time we left last night's council meeting, thirty-eight minutes after, because I have the dates there, they put a press release out. It was granted.
How did it granted without being in front of the council?
Right.
Or being on the council and voting and giving the people public comments?
Right. And get this, uh, from what I understand, the construction company that's gonna do the business, Dan Shaw.
We need the FBI down here. This is absolutely ridiculous. This is asinine.
It's unbelievable.
Right in your face.
Truly unbelievable.
Well, Dr. Larson?
So you see why I'm so passionate.
I understand.
Yes.
I understand. I know I cut it off and then we went in a tantrum.
Steve and I like to talk if you don't.
No, I don't.
Didn't realize.
Would you let the public know? I think we said it all for, I think we laid it all out, but could you let them know why they need to go to the voting booth and vote for you and your point of contact, please?
Yes, yes. So please, please, please vote for me, Dr. Monica Larson. Um, you can find me on Facebook and Instagram and and on the web. It's vote D like David, R like Robert, Monica Larson with an O, dot com is my website. It's imperative and really critical for this race. It's not ju- it's not for me. This is for all of us because it impacts all of us. This race is critical. If you wanna stop the status quo, if you wanna stop the special interests, if you are tired of the overdevelopment, if you are tired of inflation, if you are tired of the infrastructure, not having enough officers, not having stoplights when you need them to prevent accidents. If you're tired of what you see going on in Henderson, please vote. That's your power. That's your weapon. Vote these individuals out who are not serving you. Please vote for me, somebody that cares. If I didn't, I wouldn't be in this. I wanna make a difference and I wanna help you because I work for you. That's the, what a public servant does, not help myself. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Folks, uh, that's Dr. Monica Larson. She's running to be, um, Henderson City Council Member for Ward Number Two. Her opponent, um, um, has six federal lawsuits, um, charging people over eight hundred percent in interest, uh, has over a a two million dollar, um, um, tax uh, issue that he's gonna have to deal with the IRS. Um, we have information that he lived in Utah. He lives in a five million dollar house. I don't even know how he's gonna relate to, um, to people in his ward. Um, he takes a charter plane back and forth to Utah. The, we need to clean up Henderson City Council, folks. And you you got, you got a mayor that's sitting there that that has her son and her husband that works for Las Vegas Paving, and they get multimillion dollar contracts. And the reason why she's so adamant about having this Dan Shaw because she wants his vote. So she, they could keep playing this money game and just take people, take the constituents out of, out of play and have their own little private club and decide exactly where your hard-earned tax dollars is gonna go. That's not fair to you. It's not fair to your kids. You need to go out and you need to start putting people in office that's gonna do the job of the people that they're serving instead of self-serving. And these people that are in the council right now, um, Dan Shaw and the mayor, they're both self-serving. And now she brought up Dan, um, 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 Stewart. Uh, come on, Henderson, you could do better. Remember the old commercial that used to come on, all you old folks or older folks? It says Henderson, of course, Henderson was the, was the most second safest city on the planet. Remember that? And now you you have a problem with officers. You you don't even have enough officers to serve the constituents because you have council members that are too worried about their own pocketbook. They're self-serving. You need people on the council that is humble and willing to do the job of the constituents that they serve. That's what we need. Stop voting in these other folks, folks. Stop doing it. Do it for the betterment of yourself, do for the betterment of your children, do for the betterment of your grandchildren. Because this corruption on the council has to be addressed and has to be stopped. So please, vote for Dr. Monica Larson. Let's start there. Put Dr. Monica Larson on the city council so she could help serve you and make Henderson the pride and joy that it's supposed to be. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Until next time.